Morning. It is Tuesday, July 13th, 2021, and I'm going to call the meeting to order of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand if you are able and join us in stating the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we move on, is there a motion to adopt today's agenda?
Certainly.
It's been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Edens, aye. Next, we'll move on to public comment number one. This is time for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you're in the room here, you can please come forward. Or if you're on Zoom, please either raise your hand or click star nine and we will unmute you. And I always like to wait a few seconds because I know sometimes the technology can be a little slow. And not seeing any, we will close public comment number one. And we will move on to agency reports. We've got Mainstream Living's annual report. And I believe John is going to present this morning. Morning, John. Is he muted? Hi, John. I think he's raised his hand.
He should be able to talk.
We should be able to talk. Yep. John, can you put something in the chat if you can hear us? Because we cannot hear you if you are talking. We cannot hear you.
Any reason these microphones could be?
No, it's not hidden.
It's just in.
I can hear you. My microphone is unmuted.
Does it have a headset?
John, are you using like a headset or something? If you're speaking, we're not hearing you at all. And we've got you unmuted on our end. No headset. There. Okay.
Okay.
I can hear you now. Good morning.
All right. Thank you. Sorry about that.
All right. Report you've provided to us. And just if you want to go over and if there's anything that you want to expound upon, that would be great.
Okay, certainly. Well, mainstream obviously serves quite a few individuals in Story County and the CICS area. But there's only a few who receive funding directly from CICS and Story County. And the majority of ours are actually on Medicaid funding. So during the last year, of course, with COVID, things were a little bit different. But typically through our hourly services, we serve about 15 individuals through hourly services. We have 51 individuals in 14 different sites in Story County and group sites. And then we have five individuals at one facility, which we would consider medically fragile. During the last fiscal year, we had approximately 84 individuals in our day hab services. Those are starting up, had started back up this summer. And we're kind of getting those back going again, as well as the enclaves are back in force, too. We had 42 individuals served in our enclave services. Of the individuals above, we had one person who received quarter hour supports, about $1,200, just under $1,200 for last fiscal year. We had one individual for a couple of months and it was kind of in between funding to switch to Medicaid. We received $1,067 for those services. And then we have one individual which Story County pays a portion of their service fees in our day hab program. And during last fiscal year, we received about $433 for those services. As I said, we're kind of getting things going again. We've reopened our offices now. So we're getting back on track as far as that goes. And we did have a lot of people working from remotely for quite a period of time. So the day hab services are up and going strong again. And we're continuing to look forward and move forward for this fiscal year. Don't know if anyone has any specific questions?
Yes, I'd like to know, these are numbers here for a 12-month year fiscal year, right? Is your annual numbers?
Correct. That would be for the, yeah, July 1 to June 30.
How, and I know that you had certain services closed. How do these numbers compare to the previous years? Can you give us just a sense?
From a Story County or CICS perspective, these numbers probably mirror pretty closely to a normal year. As I said, the majority of our services are funded through Medicaid.
I'm not looking at all your services, not just the ones that are funded through CICS. Why am I asking that for that comparison?
Oh, well, our day hab services significantly decreased over the past fiscal year. And a lot of maybe our hourly services decreased some. Most of our daily services, we had a few individuals who either went home or... So they decreased some. But we probably kept, I would say, 90% of our day services going during the last fiscal year.
Remind me what enclaves are. I'm sorry. I can't remember what that service is.
The enclaves are individuals we have who work. We have a couple of different sites, one at Danfoss and one at, or at Hock as well. So those are basically job employment services. They shut down a lot during the past fiscal year, but they are back restarting again now.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
John, I've got a couple of questions for you. So you mentioned that you, it sounded like you maintained your programs during the past year. What type of modifications did you have to do? Have you lifted those or have you decided you're maintaining some of those modifications?
Well, the majority of the modifications we made, obviously, we tried to limit access as far as staff going to maybe only one facility so we could, you know, limit any potential exposure there. Obviously, we use masks and protective equipment throughout everything and continue to do that to a large degree. We also had, you know, we promoted vaccination as early as we could. And we had a pretty good success rate with that, both from members we serve as well as employees' perspective. And then as we're moving forward, for instance, our offices are the same as similar places where if you've been vaccinated, your masks aren't required. But if you have not, you know, it's highly suggested that masks are used for any offices as we're reopening meetings and things of that nature. And really before, as far as the day hab program, we did have to pretty well shut that down. And when we brought it back, we first started with trying to keep individuals together who either were together from their home environment and things, just to try and limit any potential exposure or risk there. And we've had, you know, we've been fortunately pretty well free for several months now.
That's, that's great. That's, that's good news. I think that answers my questions that I had. So thank you, unless there's something else. Thank you for your, your report today.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, next we'll move on to our quarterly update for workforce development and economic development planning. We've got Brenda Dreyer and Nick Sorensen.
So when you pull our presentation, I know what was attached to the agenda, I think is current. So it's like a book.
And I think if you pick up the mic, you're going to need to come up here.
See, I've been gone long enough I didn't know about said table. What a treat to be with you in person. I don't know the last time I was here on economic development business. Of course, been here on personal business and, but it's great to be with you in person. I'm going to start and talk a little bit about our workforce efforts and some of the things that have gone on in the last quarter. Of interest to everybody right now is, is really where we're at with unemployment. May, which is the current number, was at 3%. I'll be honest, it feels a lot lower than 3%. And that's what you're hearing from about every business across the county, across the region. Nick and I both actually were at the ABI conference a little over a month ago. And, and what's really happening, and there's a lot of things. I mean, I think sometimes people want to say, oh, it's the unemployment benefits that are keeping people away from work. It, a small piece. There's just generally more jobs. So if you look at the Bureau of Labor Statistics and the information that came out for the month of June, you look at where job counts were in February of 2020 and where they're at today. The economy has just grown by adding a lot of jobs. And so the system is trying to figure all of that out and unemployment and how it's calculated. But you can see really the write-up on the Eames MSA, which includes both Story and Boone County. And you are seeing some added jobs back. We're still significantly challenged within the service sector. Whether for any number of reasons, people aren't back to work completely in that area by fall. I think when, when almost 60,000 people will return to campus, it should impact that. But it, it's a complicated scenario, and I guess that's my message to you. We know that there are folks that have been away from their traditional work settings, that are struggling to go back to more traditional settings. We know that a large number of people retired ahead of when they could retire. It's a very complicated situation. But I've probably said this somewhere before my four years, but I don't know that it's been ever more important to have a multifaceted workforce development plan. I don't know how we would begin to look at our citizens or our businesses and say, at least we're doing something. We don't, we don't have the magic answer, but I think a multifaceted strategy is where we're going to be the most helpful. So I'm going to give you kind of a collection of updates today on some of the things that we are doing. So as a county, whether it be United Way or our offices, we have gotten some of the future ready funding from the state of Iowa. This last round was a dollar-for-dollar match. We spent our local match the end of June. And now we'll be able to spend what we were able to spend during that period of time. And with that, those dollars were supporting some retraining efforts. And not a large number, but we are able to do to some support of retraining. So we've wrapped up three CNA classes. The message to you is they've been really popular. The graduates coming out of those programs have found jobs with our employers, are gainfully employed. You know, the question is, are they making more money per hour? I'm not sure, but what I can tell you is they're working 40 hours a week, predictable 40 hours, getting some overtime and getting benefits. So, and most are going on to get their advanced certification, which then also bumps their salaries. So CNA has been really popular. We just wrapped up a welding class. And again, those graduates each are holding a couple of offers in their hands, trying to find really what works best. Those classes are offered actually here in Nevada. We've got a great partnership with the school district on that. And then the maintenance technician, which is a very difficult position for our existing employers to hire. Those are $50,000 and $60,000 a year jobs, very hard to hire. So we've been working with five companies who've identified candidates within their own organizations to be upskilled. And then we've added three other students that aren't tethered to an employer for that class of 10. It's a very rigorous class. It's not for everybody. But again, it's people getting promoted up to maintenance tests then creating a good opportunity in their spot. But our largest openings that we're probably really most concerned about is in healthcare and in construction and in manufacturing. Those are all great jobs with benefits, paying good hourly wages. And we're just, we're struggling in terms of applicant flow into those three key sectors. We're, we're doing the obvious. And I, I guess I would stress, you know, we're partnering with workforce developments or we're hosting our own individual career fairs. On June 9th, we went over to Marshalltown. Marshalltown's unemployment is usually always higher than ours. We've got a good relationship with the team over in Marshalltown at the Workforce Development Office. So, so June 9th, we were over there for an event. June 29th, we hosted an event at North Grand Mall. And I love that location because it's on the bus route. It's centralized. It was a really great event. We had strong employer participation. We were disappointed with the job seekers, but we're going to try that again in September, again with the push at the mall to drive an in-person event. Hopefully, when we get a bit more population back around to connect to some of our jobs. We're going to participate in the Hiring Our Heroes event in August, virtually, where maybe we've not used Homebase Iowa a lot in Story County. We still have that tool in our tool belt. It gives us something to talk about with the veterans that will be participating in that event. It's not unusual that people have been rethinking their careers, what they want to do. And, and so we'll, we'll aggressively follow up the leads to get us a part of that event. You see the date at the North Grand Mall. And the other big news in the last few weeks is our Workforce Development Office has reopened in Ames. And so slower than the other areas of the state, a little disappointing, but they are open and seeing clients face-to-face. And for those employers that want to interview in person, they can do that. I'm ready for my next slide. Want to talk a little bit about our engagement with our school districts. So we did a Teaching for the Workforce event in person this year. We did it virtually last year. Four-day conference that we partner with DMAC. And on the retraining efforts, I mean, DMAC is key in that relationship. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that's DMAC training with a certificate. It's not Nick and I teaching the classes and giving them a certificate. But we add a sector focus to the Teaching for the Workforce event. So getting around the same sorts of industries that you heard me talk about in terms of where we are seeing job growth, strong job growth. That's our message to the teachers is there are an abundance of opportunities. And so they get a chance to talk to our, our businesses. In some instances, they were able to tour. And this is actually touring the, the job site of the, the school district with Story Construction. So again, using opportunities to get the teachers out. We have 12 participants. That's down, some in the past. But looking back at the last year for our teachers, I don't know that I could blame them that, gosh, you're going to go sit for four days a class now. So we were thrilled. We had great participations from, I think, almost every district in the county. Now, not an abundance of any, but they were represented. So.
So you said a sector focused. Was this particular focus on?
Manufacturing, healthcare. So we spent time.
So what did you do in the training?
Yeah. So one day we spent on construction. One day we spent on manufacturing. One day we spent on healthcare and kind of again, trying to give them a global look about, okay, so here's healthcare careers. So the hospital presented, Story County Medical presented, the nursing homes. So again, just trying to get a glimpse of.
So they presented an area to teachers and high school teachers?
No, actually, special ed and younger kids and a principal. And so, yeah, and they earned continuing from DMAC by going through the class. So it's really about building an environment of being able to support work-based learning, building that future workforce. I'm sorry about that. I should have clarified that.
That's okay. I was wondering and I thought I won't, I won't remember this question.
Yeah, you've got to stop her. Okay, slow down, Brenda. Thank you. And then I want to, I mean, again, you're very supportive of our efforts to have a countywide job board. And so I want to share the statistics on the job board. We've seen increase in Facebook and Twitter followers. We, we brand our efforts to workforce under workinAmes.com. We've reached really in the last quarter about 17,000 people with our efforts there. You can see the Twitter efforts. We have 600 registered employers on Work in Ames. 1,938 is, I think, the highest number of jobs posted that I can remember in my four-year tenure. So again, this kind of gets back to there's just purely more jobs than what we had before. They're down, they were down last week, not, I don't know, coming off the holiday week, but they were down about 100 jobs last week. But then we went over 2,000 job seekers. So we know that there are people looking for work in our county. I'm telling our employers, get in there, do a search. It's pretty easy to use. It's an important tool that we have available. I think that's it for my, oh, one last slide. We are on our last event for See Yourself in Ames. We did two virtual events, two in-person events. This is really about promoting the area long-term for interns that are in the region. And so tonight, we're going to wrap up in person at the CPMI Event Center in the Research Park. Adam Carroll is going to be talking about successful career launch. It's an outstanding speaker. I know we have over 100 folks registered for that event in person, as well as some still virtually. So again, it might be remiss if I didn't acknowledge your support for our workforce program. It's really key in being able to do a robust county-wide effort. And, and again, I, if I would be, it would be tough to be in a position where we're having to react to the situation we're finding ourselves in. And as always, we're very open to ideas you might have. We, we hosted a meeting last week with our manufacturing community. We brought up Debbie Duran to talk about the Manufacturing 4.0 initiative. We had 50 people attend the meeting. It was well-attended. And we also did a panel where we talked about Homebase Iowa and hiring veterans. We talked about VoC Rehab. So in terms of support there, CCJ was not able to attend. Now I've got a new friend I can invite when I have those sorts of events. But we did talk about widening your perspective a bit on, while the numbers are such, when you look at kind of a more traditional workforce, we have lots of opportunities in areas where maybe you haven't recruited in the past. And there are programs to support employing those folks. So it was, we got a lot of strong feedback after the event. I toured one of our industries later and was thrilled when they, they told me that they had already made the call to VoC Rehab to have a conversation about how do we, we engage some of their clients. So any ideas you have are always open. Appreciate introductions that you've made to folks that you think might be helpful. And I welcome any questions you have on the workforce side of things.
Just one question on your first slide. You said that in May 2020, there were 47,400 positions.
Oh, you're talking about the, the labor market report.
The labor market.
Okay.
Do you know, do you have a number maybe a few months earlier than that, pre-pandemic, that we can compare to?
Absolutely. So no, I, I pulled that right from the, the Workforce Development press release. So I can actually go back as long as you want. So.
I'm thinking like on January of 2020. Because that's before we really saw the pandemic hit here. And May was kind of when everything was closing back.
Yep.
So I'd like to have something a little more longitudinal.
Yes.
If you could send that.
I'd be glad to.
I appreciate it.
Yep. No, that's easy to get.
That was the only other question I had. Thank you for allowing me to interrupt.
No, you are absolutely fine.
It was in my mind.
You are fine.
The only question I have is you said that the job attendance was, the job seeker attendance was light at the North Grand. So what are you looking at it doing potentially different to?
Just, we know our population in our largest community grows as we get closer to fall. I, I also believe that at the end of summer, children will be back in school. We'll be that much further into hopefully vaccinations kind of settled into our new norm a little bit. And again, that's me being optimistic. You can hear pundits that talk about it's going to take a lot longer. But again, we're just hoping to, and I, our, our employers, while they wish there were a lot of job seekers, think they're grateful for the ones they have that do show up. Again, you're very popular to your job seekers showing up better in-person career fair these days. So, and that, that's really, I think the message we need to continue to try to push out is that we have really good jobs open, open now. And the jobs that are, are open are even more in abundance than they were in the winter of 2020. So even presentations like this and just a few eyes seeing this. So the more we're all talking about it, the better. And, but again, I would stress, there's just some really good jobs open in healthcare manufacturing. And some of the construction companies that have openings are ones that don't lay off. I know sometimes people think bulk construction, they'll lay off. And, but no, the construction companies with openings don't lay off. And I had Egg Leader over in Ames, doesn't do a whole lot of hiring in their manufacturing area. It's pretty, but business is really good, but they're willing to do part-time. And so in our digital media efforts, we're, we're pushing up that there is some flexibility in part-time. Because that's the other thing. I think there may be people interested in working, but thinking about going back to work 40 hours in a building away from their home when they've worked from home a long time. So again, we're up for any ideas that you think might be helpful. You hear one of your counterparts in another county talking about, we can be pretty agile and, and implement efforts as we need to.
Well, I think I said it, I can't even think probably 100 times how much I love the future-ready program, the partnership with DMAC and CCJ and United Way. Is there, is there any possibility of some of our manufacturers or some of our construction, really any employers taking on apprentices, like apprenticeship programs?
So apprenticeships are kind of long and drawn out. And there are some things that they work really well with. But, you know, I think there is a real, the timing is just great for our employers to embrace retraining. So thinking differently of that person that might have been working as a waitress six months ago or pre-pandemic, who's now went through the process of learning manufacturing, that maybe that person wouldn't have gotten a look before. But because they've had a part in designing the training, there is a buy-in from them and a real commitment. We hosted another meet and greet with our CNA candidates last week. And those employers are just giddy for an opportunity to have an eight-minute conversation with candidates that are fresh off their training. So I think apprenticeships are there. They're paying them. There are some things that they really work well with. But I think these short-term certificate programs are getting people mobilized a little quicker to take some of the job openings we have. And, and certainly, retraining is on my mind. You're, you're not done hearing from me on retraining. Because we're, we're, we're putting it together and between DMAC and United Way and our offices, we're doing our best to try to put together a program. But what we know is the impact we can have, not only on communities, companies and families, by getting people upskilled to take jobs with better compensation with regular hours, with benefit programs and chances of advancement. And so the construction trade is really kind of our next focus to say, how do we put together a construction program? how do we put together a construction program that's more meaningful than just kind of a basic labor position? What are those job openings we have with our construction people that that are a bit above a general labor position? So you'll be hearing more from me as we're putting together a more comprehensive strategy around how do we put together, we've had success. How do we, how do we pull that success out even further across Story County? Because the ripple effect on a number of things benefits a lot of us. So I, like I said, we've got the partnerships in place. I think we just need to figure out, how does, how does a plan look for long-term recovery and economic growth of Story County? And how does this factor into that?
My turn?
Your turn.
All right, next slide.
I'll hang out a bit.
So I got to apologize. My slides are not updated. I have them on my desktop, but I didn't get them in there. But I think the key thing, and I'll send those to you. The key thing, piggybacking off workforce, what goes hand in hand with that is what we're working on already, which is housing. When you see low availability of housing, that also kind of coincides with employers kicking and screaming for employees. So as you all know, we have a meeting tomorrow night. All mayors have been invited. We're going to discuss the RDG housing plan with everyone involved. We're going to discuss possible goals and try and figure out how everyone working together in Story County can try and achieve for the schools. Along with that, we have broadband study that we've been sitting on for quite a while and working quite hard on. We had the sit-down with four local providers last week. Got a lot of really good insight from them that we might be able to do some meaningful applications for the broadband tax credits at the state level. Can't speak for any of them, but I do know that a few of them are planning on applying to hit those targeted areas. The one interesting thing about that is, you may be aware, is with the study, it allows us to appeal to the state maps. So the state maps are going to be on the census block. So if one person in that census block has good download upload speeds, so then all the census blocked us. So one mile over, somebody could have no internet, but the state's saying they have good speeds. We can challenge that. However, we got this information a little bit late because applications are due on the twenty-sixth, and your appeal process might take two weeks. So the goal there is, let's get low-hanging fruit, find the tier ones for this year. But there's going to be another hundred million next year that we can hit those target areas, talk to the people in those census blocks that don't have it. Because individuals can actually appeal the state maps as well. And I think they'll listen a lot more to the resident than they will necessarily to the providers. Other than that, I could go through each community on what's going on. I have that on my slides. But I think we've taken up quite a bit of time. Is there any questions you guys have of me right now?
I have a couple of questions. So I'm looking at some of the housing division questions. I see like Colo and Huxley, Huxley is looking at it. You've got Maxwell, all of that. So kind of where are they in the talks? I guess, when did they initially start having those conversations? Where are they at this particular time?
So with Huxley, Huxley is kind of one of those locations in Story County that, I mean, they'll take help, obviously. But I think we all know Huxley is going to grow just because of their geographic location. Number one, they have three developers that are looking to do housing subdivisions. They're all in the negotiation side of the incentive in Huxley. Maxwell, they're still trying to work out how they can. The problem with incentives in some of the communities is they have to assume debt to be able to access that TIF. And what that does is it takes, and it gets put to their debt capacity. And they can push that debt capacity that if something major happens with wastewater water, some improvement has to happen, they won't have the lending capacity to be able to take care of that emergency. So you're going to see that difficulty in a lot of your your smaller communities because the taxable value just isn't there right now to be able to do those meaningful projects. And that's kind of where that public-private partnership comes into play. And that's why we're having that meeting here. That's why we did that study. With Colo, they they own the ground. And they're looking at it and trying to figure out ways of, you know, how do we make this appealing to a developer? To be honest, the hardest part is finding the developer. Once you find a developer that's interested in the market, typically you can work through the backside of things. But most of our smaller towns are high-risk markets because there hasn't been a housing subdivision in X amount of areas. And I say most, not all, you know, Gilbert, Huxley, Slater's working on one right now. It's, I would say it might still be a high risk, but it's a very desirable community as well. When you start getting into Ziering and McCallsburg and Kelly, Cambridge, that's where it gets difficult. And then are the farmers willing to part ways with ground on the adjacent property? That's, that's another big hurdle as well. So the other communities that are just in the the talking process, there's, I don't know that they have a path forward yet. And that's part of the reason we're having the meeting tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
We're talking a lot about infill potential. I know you have this. When I look at the list you have here in your slide, I only see one community that's really looking at what I would call infill from your description, and that's McCallsburg.
So McCallsburg actually has a housing subdivision that they did that the city owns. So there's flexibility with that ground. I actually have a list that we worked on that has a lot more than just that. Some of them have been gifted to the adjoining property owner. Well, once your yard gets bigger, it's it's kind of hard to part ways with that ground yet. But there, there is a substantial amount spread across Story County. They're not all necessarily in city ownership. So it's, it's, the idea is, how do you landbank that to the point where there's a developer that says, if you have twenty throughout Story County, now I'm interested. But if you only have five and they're spread all the way across, I can't mobilize and make it.
Is that a magic number or something you've seen before? Twenty around Story County seems to be.
So I want to talk to at least three of our housing developers, if not five, to try and get a sense on what is that magic number? I've seen housing developments, new subdivisions done nine lots at a time. To me, that's not ideal for the city. It's ideal for the developer because it's low risk, right? But for the city, then they have to come back after those nine are filled and negotiate the next nine, and then the next nine, and then negotiation each time. It is nice because it gives a little bit more flexibility. If it works, then you can reduce that incentive. But it's, it's, it becomes a certain point where it's expensive for the city to negotiate that time and time again.
Thank you.
Any additional question?
I'm just wondering about workforce, if you've done outreach to in-earr communities and, you know, communities that maybe were traditionally showing up that.
That's, we we rely a little bit about on our partnership with the Human Service Coalition to push that out to their their clients. But I think you're right. I think we've got to continue to work on, I know St. Cecilia's is doing a lot with that. And I don't know if they're officially a part of the group, but I I think you're absolutely right. We got to go to those populations and make sure that we're getting that. I think the faith-based community is another one we discussed in saying, you know, it's going to take a lot of different ways of, you know, beyond our traditional channels of pushing out a flyer on a job fair or promoting the job board. So I thought that's a great point.
Or even like talking to different groups. I know there are lots of groups around.
Yep.
Central Iowa, like, you know, Latino groups or, you know, African-American groups or Arab-American groups where you could maybe just go in and talk about.
Yes.
Some opportunities.
So, yep, no, I welcome any context you can give us into any of those groups. Because I, again, I think it's one thing to get a flyer in your inbox. It's another to to hear a presentation that says, here's, here's really the employment picture. Here's, I think, whenever we start talking about the average wage of manufacturer is fifty thousand dollars a year. And, you know, we start talking about some of those things, like people are like, gosh, I never thought of that. But no, I'd appreciate any context you could give us and that we can follow up on and make sure that we're. Be good, I think, you know, getting back out even to the service clubs that are around, just powering people that go out and talk to their neighbors and their relatives.
So you did a diversity, equity, and inclusion segment as part of See Yourself in Eames. Says there were various speakers. I'm wondering if you've already got some context there that you might contact some of those persons and ask about?
Yeah, I, I, we were actually the EBI for that event, so I wasn't even a hundred percent sure who all talked, but we'll follow up with our events.
Yeah, you might, you might already have some contact information there that would be helpful in finding those places.
That's great. Again, we appreciate the ideas and something we maybe haven't thought of.
Well, we appreciate that.
Yeah, no, it's, it takes a lot of us to be talking the talk and getting the correct information out there, so.
I have on my calendar that on Thursday, it looks like there is a changemaker, diversity, equity, and inclusion event at Homewood Golf Course.
Let me check.
At seven thirty A M., eight A M.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there might be some contacts there.
Yeah, I don't have that on my schedule, so I need to check on that.
Yeah, I have seven thirty to nine. Any additional questions? Yeah.
Good, let me get discussion going.
Thank you again.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, next we'll move on to consideration of minutes. Move to the minutes as presented. Sorry. Then moved in second is Basil, Markin, Headen's eye. Next we have consideration of personnel actions, action forms.
And move approval as listed.
Second, then moved in second is Markin, Basil, Headen's eye. Consent agenda items. Anyone pulling anything from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Then moved in second is Basil, Markin, Headen's eye. We have a long consent agenda today. We have no public hearing items, so now we are down to additional items. The discussion and consideration of the agreement between Story County and the city of Slater and Ballard School District for the Trail Site Development Urban Renewal Area. And I see that Jennifer's here this morning. If you want to come up and.
So normally, as we were talking last week, normally the typical arguments for residential is only ten years. But the volatile economic situation we're having right now, the costs have gone up. So we are for this development, and we're asking if we can extend it for fifteen instead of the ten. When the developer originally was, had estimates, we was looking at one point three million dollars in investment in infrastructure. And now is looking at one point nine. And our best calculations on the ten years, he, they would receive approximately five hundred thousand dollars in rebates for that infrastructure. Even if we extend it to fifteen, you'd only be receiving approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand in rebates. So he is, they are making a very significant contribution to our community in creating this housing development. And this is just phase one for them at, at only nineteen housing lots. And in total, they'll have around fifty when the development is complete. I will, I did attend the school board meeting for their consideration last night. And no questions passed. They, they are very much in the approval of it, so. Did you guys have any questions? I know I had submitted the developer's agreement for your review. So any questions?
I appreciate that. I just kind of have a question about the LM audit side of money. And, you know, the county doesn't defer residential, so this is kind of new to us.
Yeah.
So can you just explain to me, is that audited to ensure that those funds go to low-to-moderate income housing? How is that, how is that tracked?
The developer actually has to, the developer has to provide either a statement saying that X amount of lots or houses were sold to or supplied to a low-to-moderate income family. Or the city has to set aside, I forget the exact percentage, but fifty points.
Fifty point six.
Yeah. Out of, out of all of the rebates.
Okay, so then what happens to that fifty point six? That's my question. How is it determined? Where does that go? How is, how is that tracked?
It sits in the city funds until we have a project for low-to-moderate income for infrastructure or or something. Our auditor does track it. We actually have to do TIF reports to the state every year, and it's tracked through the state as well. It's a separate line item of the low-to-moderate income dollars that are set aside.
Okay, good, okay, that makes sense now. Is there a timeframe and how soon that has to be utilized? Or can you just?
Not that I'm aware of. And actually, during our last audit, from last year's audit, or my auditor and I are talking about how to, how to spend that, so.
Because we have some monies like that.
We do have about fifty thousand dollars set aside from our last housing development that we want to use towards low-to-moderate income.
Do you know, is the developer planning any specific lots or building?
There, there is some plan to do some, some elderly facilities, single-level spec places next to the, next to our park, so. So you say senior, are you, you're, are you thinking like a, like a senior living place? Or are you thinking more of the accommodation of the home being for the single entry? A condo living, purchasable by individuals as condo living. But he's, he also built homes, so he, you know, planned, he's done that before in Slater. He's built homes that are, are specifically built for handicap accessibility, and it's all one ground level. And it's on slab and no basement, you know, stuff like that.
Standalone units.
Stand, he's talked about both, some standalone, some condo kind of vision.
Okay. So how, so how much, well, that fifty point six percent, let's say there aren't any low-to-moderate income in this subdivision. How much money would the city end up having banked, so to speak, and need to find a base for a project?
Well, with our estimates of the rebates going back is, is taking only five hundred thousand. That's taking the fifty percent out, so probably about five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand, that's.
That's significant, but.
That is significant if you don't get any of those units out of this development.
Yeah.
That's a significant amount of money to try to get utilized. Do you need to do it in the city of Slater? Can you do it in other communities in Story County?
That's a good question for our TIF attorney. I'm unaware if we could use it outside city limits, but.
I have no idea. I just thought.
You don't, it doesn't have to be within the.
It doesn't have to be here.
It doesn't have to be within the development area. It just has to, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't know.
But I don't know how far out it has to be. But that's not hard to expend either. We're, you know, we're looking at sewer projects right now that are six point six million dollars, so.
But would a sewer project qualify for low-to-moderate income housing?
It depends on how specific area. If we had to put in new sewer system or. If we had to put in new sewer system or something in, in, to, in order to provide housing for low-to-modern area, then it would qualify for that area.
One more question, sorry. So this is phase one, and it's for phase one. If it goes out 15 years, the anticipated amount would be 750.
Thousand rebates to, to the developer, yeah.
And so then it would be 750 expected.
It could be an LMI.
For phase one.
And that was how many homes again in phase?
19 lots.
19 lots.
What happens with phase two?
We don't know if we'll do a developer's agreement for phase two yet.
Okay.
And what is your timeline for phase two? Do you have one?
He does not have one at this time.
Other questions? I know I also reached out to Ballard as well and got an email back from the superintendent. I also talked with, talked, I kind of emailed with one of the board members that I, that I knew, just since it was last night. And just trying to see where they're at. They did say that they had passed it, or at least the superintendent. I got a little inclination from one of the board members who made the comment that a lot of the discussion was around the 10 years, not necessarily extending out for 15. But I wasn't there for the meeting, so I, and that was just one person and stuff, so. On there. That was just, but I do know the superintendent said that it, he said it wasn't, must not have had heavy debate.
It did not. In fact, it was on their consent agenda versus what they pulled just because I was there to have conversation.
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, I tried to look, and I didn't have, obviously it's a quick turn on. I didn't see any meeting minutes yet, that's why I didn't reach out this morning and getting a little bit of, a little bit of input on that. I do have one question. So is there going to be like any housing abatement available? Like a tax abatement file?
No, you can't do rebate with the developer and, and do a rebate for, for property owners.
And then. And I get it, you're looking at, at the, the agreement or whatever says up to that additional five years for totaling 15. So it's kind of the expectation of it will be an additional five.
That, that's in case we would meet our max dollars, which we don't anticipate we could at, at the investment of 1.9 million. We don't anticipate we would meet those dollars.
Okay. I think they answered my questions, at least since I'm thinking right at the moment.
And I know last week you were worried about setting precedents. I think this is an unusual circumstance with the environment we have, like economic environment, so.
What's the timeline for the developer of getting the infrastructure in?
He wants to start right away. He's ready to sign contracts for.
And if I recall correctly from, I think you said that the last time, I could be incorrect. Wasn't this already started discussions or kind of the plat laid out a few years ago?
Yeah, yeah, they, they started the discussions about three to five years ago, but finally got the plat recorded just earlier this year.
So something from last week that kind of confused me. If the developer signs the contracts now, even if the work comes in lower than expected, they still are required to pay that higher cost for the work?
No, he'll have to, he'll have to provide actual costs. But we write the contract now at the, at the, at the estimates.
But this doesn't, would, doesn't absolutely have to be decided right now for the developer to move forward?
The 15 years?
Yeah.
It does not, but our tip attorney is recommending that it is now. Otherwise, we have to go back through and redo a developer's agreement with our attorney and, and get permission again from the county and, and school board.
And I guess my one last question is whether you extend yet additional five years or not. So whether it's that 10 years or 15 years, the developer is going to continue to move forward with this, or?
It will seriously affect whether he'll ever do phase two because he may not be able to move forward to do another phase.
Got you, got you. Okay. Questions, thoughts?
Well, I still have concerns about setting precedent. And I, you're making a point that this is an unusual circumstance because the costs being so high, and they're wanting to move forward on the project now. And we're certainly supportive of additional housing in Story County. But I, I really, I really see it as us responding to an unusual situation if, if we approve this. And we probably stick for the record that it is an unusual situation, and we're taking that into account.
Yeah, I look, I look at that too. I do have a lot of concerns with the precedents that we may be setting. I recognize the need for housing, and I think all three of us have talked about the need for housing, and we've had predecessors talk about the need for housing as well. I do look at it as well as that this was started back a few years ago, three, four years ago. So it wasn't, you know, in the midst, we're already kind of pre-pandemic planning, and I think the pandemic is what has increased costs right now. Supervisor Basil, I think you mentioned last time, we've seen some construction costs starting to come down. Not real dramatic yet, but we are seeing that slowly starting to come down, and we hope that, that continues.
Is there, there, maybe a minute, there's one other question. If the, your 15 years is based on the estimate we have, the developer has now. So is there anything in your agreement with the developer? Is there any wiggle room if, in fact, the costs are less than these bids? Are you just looking at this amount? Decreased program, did you understand my question?
Yep.
I don't see it anywhere in that.
It does not. And, and I'm trying to think through previous agreements we've had with other developers too. There's, as far as time-wise, I don't think there's, I mean, like I said, obviously, we're not going to exceed the amount that's in the development agreement or their actual costs. Highly unlikely that they would recoup all of their costs.
But if it's some crazy reason, it caps, it caps at that in one late night.
Values, yeah, yeah, value, if values just skyrocket. I mean, that would mean that we would have to collect $4 million off of 19 lots in 10 to 15 years. And I just, I don't see that happening at all because of 50% of that going to LMI. I just, I, I can't fathom that our property valuations would go up by $4 million. The tax, not valuations, but taxes paid go up by $4 million over, over 10 years.
You ready for motion?
Yeah. There's no additional questions?
I would move that we approved the agreement between Story County and City of Slater and Ballard Community School District for Trailside Development Urban Renewal Area, and specifically that we're allowing an extension of the ability of the city to collect tax increment in order to adequately fund the project in the urban renewal area for up to 15 years.
Give me a second. Okay, then moved in seconded. Any further discussion?
I would just like the, the minutes to state that there was discussion that we did not consider as precedent, as eventual for any future requests like this.
Okay, remember that. Markan?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Headen's eye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming here to answer a question.
Thank you. And I appreciate that, the information just coming forward at the, with the Board of, the Ballard School Board as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
To, to get that as well, so, thanks.
Thank you.
We do not have any departmental reports or other reports. Upcoming agenda items. Nothing? I don't have anything at this time. So now it's time for public forum number two. Comments from the public on items not on the agenda. The board may not take action due to the open meeting requirements, but may do so in the future. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment? It's open and seeing them. We will close the public comment number two, and we'll move on to liaison assignments and any meeting updates and announcements from supervisors. Supervisor Basil, do you want to start?
I feel like it's a crazy week. So we have the American Rescue Act meeting, a work session tomorrow, this afternoon, and then housing study work session tomorrow evening. There's a city development board meeting tomorrow, phone meeting at 2:00. I was going to go attend the community conversations meeting in Ames. United Ways meeting tomorrow, Thursday. And then we have our verbal party for the Wildwood class that day, but also under collaboration, YASIS Impact Awards are Thursday evening. So I need to remember that. Friday, I've got Iowa Council on Homelessness. A meeting at Mainstream. And that's for the week. That's it.
Okay. All right.
Again, the planning meeting for recovery this afternoon at 6:00. I have just for the city council meeting, user and metropolitan planning organization could be in your plan. The housing study again Wednesday, and circle board meeting Thursday morning. And, oh, Iowa Creek Water Ship Management Authority Thursday afternoon. So then, I think a couple of things are pending for Friday and for next Monday. Yeah, would point out, and I kind of missed this on the agenda part. I mean, would point out that we may have something on our agenda next week, some requests from some broadband service providers on support for some grants, applications they're working on for the money from that state has to provide for expansion. But I'm still working on that, so we'll see if there's something there. But it was, and as Nick said, it was a very good meeting. It was really good to be able to get with service providers, get in the same room and actually talk about what's our area look like? What services do you provide? What makes sense? And to look at ourselves. So I want to thank Nick for his helping pull that together, and we am. That was a good meeting.
Great, I have the same meetings as both of you. I also have a, I said on the ARC board, I have a ARC retreat meeting tonight. I have a meeting down in Cape Bridge tomorrow afternoon, and so I hope to call into the Ames Annexation meeting. I may miss that, but I'm going to try to call into that as well. Friday, or Thursday, excuse me, I have dental appointment. And then I do have our breakout group for NAGO leadership. Friday, I will be out of the office, and that's on my calendar for right now, besides the housing studies and all the, everything else that everybody, everybody has. Yep, there is nothing else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Second. Moved in second, Basil?
Aye.
Markan?
Aye.
Headen's eye, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.